I call the meeting to order for the May 9 closed session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I think this is the only opportunity the public has to make comments to you on Roman numeral 12, which is you're voting on matters that you want the city staff to spend time on preparing an agenda report for a future meeting. One of those tonight is a proposal to require the proprietors of short-term lodgings to invest 10% of the rent that they collect in improvements to their property. I don't know how many of you read my written comments, and you may not have had a chance this time especially because you had a very large agenda packet. But in my view, this is a proposal that sounds like a good idea until you think about it, and then it doesn't sound all that great. First of all, I'm not sure it's really the role of government to be telling private citizens how they should be spending the income that they receive. The staff may find examples of that somewhere else in our code. I cannot think of any. And then number two, how do you track this with 1,550 short-term rentals in our city? And even if you could track it, how do you equate the dollars spent with the actual result that is achieved? And I would have you think of the example, perhaps a proprietor of a short-term rental happens to be a very competent handyman, and they spend their own time keeping their property in very top-notch condition, but don't spend a whole lot of money on that. So how would you equate that or compare that to somebody who's hiring an outside contractor? And I don't think your purpose is to force people to do that. So for many reasons, I don't really think it's something that the staff should be spending a lot of time preparing a report about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Wonderful. Seeing none, Ms. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
Yes, thank you. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss with legal counsel the litigation entitled State Farm General Insurance Company versus Newport Beach, and two cases titled Marshall Sync versus Newport Beach, as well as to meet with the city's real property negotiators related to negotiations with Evan Planto related to the property at 215 15th Street in Newport Beach, and that's where the American Legion is located. And that's all that's set forth on the agenda under item 3A and B. Thank you.
Thank you. We're recessed until 5:00 regular meeting. Call the meeting to order for the May 9 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Ms. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you. There's no closed session report this evening.
Now it's the time for the invocation by President Daniel Livingston, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Newport Beach.
Our beloved Father in heaven, we are grateful to have the opportunity to be here tonight in this beautiful setting, in our beautiful city that we love. We are grateful to thee for the privilege of living here, for the blessings that thou hast bestowed upon us as a people and as citizens of this city and of this nation. We're grateful for this country, for the freedom that it allows us to meet tonight and to exercise our rights as citizens. We're grateful for a nation which has given to the world the greatest amount of political freedom, of economic prosperity, and of individual dignity the world has ever known. We pray thy blessing to be on the first responders of this community, our fire and police and EMTs and medical staffs, that they might be protected in their important work. We ask thy blessing to be on the members of this council, that they might exercise the authority that they have wisely and in accordance with the best interests of our city, that they might promote its safety and prosperity here for all its citizens and for those who come to visit. Again, express our gratitude to thee, Father, and invite thy Spirit to be here tonight. We do so in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge to our wonderful country? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Wonderful. Now it's the time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities, and time for council members to request an A1 item for a future agenda. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, City Attorney Assistant City Manager and I went to DC to lobby for community engagement in the FAA's reauthorization bill. I attended the Aviation and Emissions Symposium and represented District 15 at this year's SCAG Regional Conference and General Assembly. It's a wonderful opportunity to engage with other communities about their approaches to issues like housing, homelessness, and infrastructure. Thank you.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a chance to speak at Library Week, so it was a lot of fun. I was talking to babies, so it was more dancing and singing, so that was fun. Then I had a tour of the library and fire station, number one, that's been in the city for a long time, so it was a fun tour, and look forward to starting that project eventually. Also, with our harbor master, I went to the Harbor Summit, so I had an opportunity to meet with a lot of the boaters in our community and a lot of charter rental companies as well. I also attended the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Awards Dinner. I'll let Councilwoman Grant talk about that. I'm sure she'll give that in her report. That was a wonderful evening. And then I also attended the Newport Beach Police Scholarship Foundation Award presentation, which was incredible. That was scholarships given to uniform officers in our city, their kids, so that was really special. And then we're celebrating our distinguished citizen program. The Newport Beach Foundation is hosting our eighth class. We had our first class last week. We've got 32 students in that program, really excited about this iteration. I also attended and helped support the Orange County Kids Run. So the Kids Run is where these almost 6,000 students showed up to their fairgrounds, and they completed the last mile of a 26-mile course over a couple-month process. So we had 6,000 students running. It was a lot of fun. Also attended opening day for the American Legion Yacht Club, and then also with almost all of my cohorts up here, the Newport Harbor Yacht Club opening day. So that was a lot of fun. But I do want to draw attention, this is National Safe Boater Week coming up. Our harbor master here, Mr. Paul Blank, is in attendance, and on Friday, May 19, it is Where Your Life Jacket to Work Day. So I think our harbor master has a life jacket on. I think the mayor's going to be wearing that on the 19th, so look forward to seeing that. But National Safe Boating Week kicks off next day on May 20 through the 26th. Great focus for the week before the big boating holiday weekend of Memorial Day. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Good evening. I had similar activities as Councilmember Stapleton, but I will highlight just a few of those. I also did toddler storytime at Central Library in celebration of National Library Week, wonderful opportunity to engage with the community. And I also attended the academic awards in April with the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and that was a really eye-opening evening, seeing how well our students here in the Newport Mesa School District perform and how they're moving on into the bigger world. Really exciting to see that progress. I planted trees for Arbor Day with Anderson School third graders. Again, an opportunity to interact with our students in our community and see how wonderful they all can attend events and perform well at these events. It was organized by our public works team. I met with a board member of the United Ways Commission to End Homelessness to create a better understanding of their efforts to transition homeless people in our community to permanent supportive housing, which is a really important goal of our community as well. I was down at the American Legion this month, also at their law and order banquet, and was able to see the incredible achievements of not only our city, but our surrounding cities' public safety and first responding community. And finally, I attended a tour of Buck Gully, again with our Parks Department and with the Irvine Ranch Conservancy, and there is a lot of good work being done to understand our critical resources in our community in Buck Gully and the fire safety operations that are so important to our community. And they're under our combined jurisdiction, so it's really a pleasure to see how our departments are working together with the Irvine Ranch Conservancy.
Councilmember Wiegand.
At the benefit of going towards the end of this report, as I get to cover all the same things you guys already mentioned, but yeah, Library Week, I was happy to do some dancing and some activities with our toddlers in the Mariners Branch, and actually made me sweat more than sitting up here in these council meetings, so put me on the spot. But I attended the scholarship awards with my colleagues Stapleton and Grant. I did the Arbor Day with Councilmember Grant as well. And then with Councilmen Stapleton, we attended the Balboa Peninsula at the library and fire station, did a tour of that in anticipation of our remodel project, so those are mine.
Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, a couple of nautical things. Along with Mayor Protem O'Neill, I attended the Insonata Race kickoff, if you will, and then we met upstairs with officials from Insonata, the harbor master, and then we had our own harbor master there, Mr. Paul Blank, and some good conversation and just keeping the long-term, that race, Insonata race started in 1948, and it's been going on. It's a great kind of camaraderie between officials in Insonata and Newport Beach, and it's been going on for a long time, so it was great to support that. And that was at BCYC, the Yacht Club, which for the last, I don't know, decade at least, that yacht club has been really a big part of continuing the race. It really needs a strong organization, and they certainly have provided that. And then I happened to be at Newport Yacht Club for opening day and was pleased to run into fellow council members, Grant, O'Neill, Stapleton, and Wiegand. We had a nice visit and a pretty good photograph of the five of us up there at the yacht club. And it struck me that it is really, all of our yacht clubs on the water is just a very strong community of folks, and we truly are a boating community in all its manifestations. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thanks. In addition to everything else already referenced, I hosted a Girl Scout troop in here, which was a lot of fun last week. I attended the Interfaith Prayer Breakfast last Friday. And then upcoming, we have a Finance Committee meeting on Thursday, May 11, at 3:00 PM. We're going to be discussing quite a bit on where the bones of the budget are going to be when we present, excuse me, when our city manager presents to the city council. We also have Public Safety Day coming up on Saturday, which is the 13th, from 12 to 3:00 PM, at our police and fire station, the one over on the other side of Fashion Island. And then to all the moms out there, Happy Mother's Day this weekend.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I just have one quick announcement about our boards and commissions openings. Tomorrow is the deadline to apply. We do have a large number of seats available, I think I have a slide coming up, and a whole plethora of options throughout the city. And so I see so many involved individuals here, and you might just be involved for lawn bowling, but you could also be involved in other things. So take a look at the list, and I would encourage everyone to get applications in by tomorrow, because that's the deadline. All right. And that is all I have. We're now going to move on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. This is going to be a non-discussion item. Councilmember Stapleton has asked council to consider, with two years in operation, evaluating the Boardwalk Ambassador Program and consider options, alternatives to effectively manage the boardwalk for the upcoming summer season. Let's take a straw vote on that.
That's unanimous, 7-0.
Wonderful. And I'm asking council to consider amending Chapter 5.95 Short-Term Lodging Permit of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to require that at least once every three years, owners of a short-term lodging unit make a minimum reinvestment in their property of at least 10% of the rent collected from the short-term rental of their property during the preceding three years. Newly constructed lodging units would be exempt from this requirement for five years following the receipt of a certificate of occupancy. Let's take a straw vote.
That is unanimous, 7-0.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 11. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion, the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar conference to announce related to 1 through 11?
I have none.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Not pulling anything but recusing myself on item number three because of real property interest at 4110 MacArthur, the Pacific Club.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
None.
Councilmember Wiegand.
I'm going to pull my item that I asked for A1, item number three, for discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Protem.
None.
And I have none.
All right. With item number three being pulled by Councilmember Wiegand, I move the balance of the consent calendar.
We have a second. Seconding by Councilmember Stapleton. We'll now go to public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 11.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Item four on your consent calendar is a revision proposed to the city's city council policy G1, which has to do with the retention, removal, and maintenance of city trees. This is your guidance to the Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commission on how they should and to the city staff on how they should process requests for those items related to trees. This always seems to be a work in progress, and I would like to suggest to you that the revision you have before you tonight is still a work in progress. And a particular issue that has come up recently is what your expectation is of the extent to which the decisions made by that commission can be appealed to you. In our charter, the PB and R Commission is an advisory commission, and the expectation would normally be that any decision that they make can be appealed to you. And in fact, at their meetings in years past, they always said, if you're not happy with what we did, you can appeal it to the city council. However, if you read the proposed tree policy, G1, you will see that the right to appeal is rather murky. The last item that came to the city council came to you by a call for review by one of the council members, because it was not clear even that the affected homeowner had a right to appeal their denial. And so if you wish all their decisions to be appealable to you, which I think is your intent, that needs to be more clearly spelled out here, especially because in the last six months, on two occasions, they have circumvented that opportunity. The opportunity exists because when they decide to remove a tree, a landmark or special tree, it is supposed to be posted with that right to appeal, and they have been told by the staff that they have the right to waive that portion of the policy. And so I think you need to make it clear to them whether they actually can waive the right to appeal their decision or not. So this still needs further work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on consent calendar? Seeing none? Okay. But we have a motion?
Oh, we have one.
Okay. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Mr. Mayor, when item number three comes back, I have the same conflict previously declared by Councilmember Stapleton.
Wonderful. So let's go back to item number three.
Yeah, I just pulled item. I wanted to see those guys have to get up and down. Now, I received a couple of comments from members of the public concerned with the process on this, and I received some written comments as well that kind of explained that. So I just want to maybe staff, if Simone, you come up and just kind of go over the process on how this works, and you kind of go over maybe a little history on that, where the 30% originally came from in the airport area, and the fact that housing was probably never really anticipated for that area, and just kind of mark it where we are and just maybe a little overview, and that at least gives the public an explanation on how this process will work, where the steps are along the way.
Right. I will. Thank you. Simone Juerges, you're Community Development Director. So this is a PC text up in the airport area, and PC texts are like your special zoning code, special zoning language for that area. In that PC text and that zoning that we say, it was actually written in as 30% of all residential projects to have an affordability component. And if we recall, up in the airport area, we didn't have a lot of residential. It was just mostly office and maybe some even light industrial. We put, because of the past RENA, back then in our fifth cycle, staff wrote in an amendment to the PC text for a residential overlay that actually mandated 30% of the projects, residential projects, to have an affordability component. Staff never anticipated anybody actually doing a residential project. It was just never conceived of. And at this time, state wasn't mandating this hard RENA and high affordability levels, high RENA numbers. Never contemplated actually housing to be even built by the airport. Now, fast forward in 2023, now we're realizing we have an enormous RENA we have to contend with. We did, from a staff standpoint, and we presented to the city council, we did a study on what is that level of affordability that we can impose on projects as we go forward, separate from what state law says. And that study came back, we presented to the council, an inclusionary number between 7 and 8%, depending if it's rent or for sale. This site here has a 30% affordability component. Per our study, there's an impediment to allowing for affordable housing. Council didn't want to adopt that inclusionary ordinance at any time, but our studies have shown that a higher affordability doesn't necessarily bring you more affordable units. So in this particular case, Councilmember Wiegand, you've initiated this amendment to change that 30% down to 15%. 15% is what state law allows for density bonus. If you provide 15% affordable units, you can get a bump in your density by 50%, I'm sorry. So the process would be that we would go ahead and change that PC text, just change that number from 30 to 15, look at the sequel provision, and then we would head towards the planning commission and then to the city council. I think from a timing standpoint, we're predicting about 90 days, maybe about three months to go through the entire process, and then we'll come back here to the city council for your consideration.
Great, thank you. I just want the public to know that we're not passing this tonight. This initiates the process. We go to the planning commission. Planning commission will make a recommendation. It'll come to the council, we'll have a discussion, and then it'll be.
Correct. You're not approving anything this evening. This just begins the process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
So acknowledging that we will have another chance to discuss this, it'll be discussed at the planning commission and then discussed here again, that I do think lends a certain amount of assurances to the community that there'll be additional opportunity to take a look at what we're thinking about doing here. But I'm just wondering, in the bigger picture, we are in the process of a general plan update. We are in the process of looking at master planning in additional ways in the airport area. This feels just like a one-up kind of a thing, and I'm just wondering why it's so relevant to do immediately as opposed to as part of that more global process.
So this is a good question, Councilmember Grant. We are in the middle of updating our land use element, which will incorporate a lot of that housing in the airport area. At the same time, we are having a dual track with our general plan amendment. We actually have project applications pending for the airport area. So we have, I think I want to say about three applications pending. Two of them are looking forward to see if the council will change the affordability level from that 30% down to 15%. Whether they go forward, if the council does not approve a change, and whether they go forward or not, we don't know. I think if they're looking forward to, if there is an opportunity for the council to go ahead and reduce that from a 30 down to 15, they will pursue an actual housing project and deliver 15% affordable. So to answer your question, we have pending applications.
So in those pending applications, are they providing for 30%? Or, I mean, what's pending?
Pending is a housing project. As far as from the affordability component, we haven't got to that.
We don't know that piece?
Correct.
And I guess my next question would be, or my comment would be that we've had feasible projects that have been built at the 30% level, and this seems to be stepping back from that, and is there an explanation for why we wouldn't continue the 30%?
So we don't have projects that have been built at the 30% level.
We don't?
No. We had one project, Newport Crossings, was entitled at 30%. It has not been built yet.
Okay.
So to answer your question, we don't have projects that have built at 30% yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments up here? Perfect. Let's go out to the public. Comments on this item? Comments just about this item?
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I share Councilmember Grant's concern about why this is being brought forward separately from the larger process that we're undergoing. I would like to, I think, clarify that the city has, perhaps before Mr. Juerges was here, faced large RENA requirements in the past. I think it was the fourth cycle, not the fifth cycle. We had a large RENA requirement, and I think that is why in our current general plan, there was an allocation for 2,200 housing units in the airport area that originally had not been planned for housing at all. And while the project that was entitled has not been completed, I believe it's currently under construction. I don't know what its current status is. I believe, looking at the building permits, that the site is being leveled and the soil remediated for some kind of project, so I don't know what the status of that is. And the problem, obviously, with lowering the requirement is we are under the gun more seriously than we were in those previous years to actually come forward with that affordable housing. And the lower the requirement is, the more total housing we have to approve to get to that level. So it's good that there will be more discussion about this. It would be even better if it was tied in with the general idea of what we're going to do with the airport area rather than doing this separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this?
It's been a while. Good day, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. As you know, I'm the current president of SPON. This item was previously brought before the council as a consent item. At that time, each council member voted against it. I understand a developer has approached you and said they could not make a project work at 30%. Yet we have approved projects in the airport area at 30%. Mr. Mosher's letter details a few of those. Previously, the council directed staff to develop a specific plan for the airport area. A small group of property owners offered to pay for it. This area must have a comprehensive plan to enable it to reach its potential as another of our beloved villages. Leaving the affordable level at 30% allows us to develop and implement that plan. Lowering it allows developers with little or no history of creating mixed-income housing to blow into town and build a project. There are capable apartment developers, some in Newport Beach even, who can make these projects work at 30%. During the last council term, we brought a Redondo Beach developer to a study session who builds apartments with 40% affordable units. He explained that to achieve that ratio requires several funding sources, and the takeaway was that developers that specialize in this can make it work. Newport Beach deserves this caliber of developer, working to a specific plan to realize the potential for this canvas has. No other area of the city has this potential, and not taking advantage of it will drive the affordable units to other areas less capable of digesting them. Our HCD-approved housing element anticipates all development at 40% affordable. We ask that you reject this item this evening and redirect staff to work towards the creation of an airport area-specific plan with stakeholder involvement. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good afternoon, Mayor Blom and
Good afternoon, Mayor Blom and members of the city council. My name is Susan DeSantis. I'm here this evening representing good neighbor Newport organization, who has some concerns about this proposal to reduce the inclusionary requirement from 30 to 15%. More specifically, I'm going to hone in on three points that have been made previously. One is that if there is a reduction in the percentage of affordable units, this will mean that there will be far more units of housing required than is mandated by the state to just meet the affordability numbers. And that's a major concern. Secondly, it will push more units to areas of the city where the impact will be felt much greater than in the airport area. And then, thirdly, it will make the approval of the land use element much more challenging. Our proposal to you is that you seriously consider increasing density on these projects that would allow for more affordability without having to reduce the inclusionary requirement from 30 to 15%. And we appreciate you considering our concerns as part of your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back up here. Councilmember Grant.
So, just one final comment. I'm not against reviewing this concept. I think it's an important concept to be reviewing, and so, again, I would reiterate that knowing that it's going to go to the planning commission and come back here, that leaves a certain comfort level. But I would like to mention that I think that it's important for us to look at all aspects of this and not just draft an ordinance that encompasses this reduction, but that we look at other alternatives to perhaps achieving the density that we need in the affordable component. And I hope that staff will come back to us with some alternatives as well.
Wonderful. My only thoughts on this, and I know we've gotten caught up on the inclusionary piece before, and I think that capitalism finds a way to make things work the way they're going to work. And even though some cities have the ability to do it, it doesn't mean they're the type of projects we always want. And I do think that there's a density bonus right now that the state just put out at 15%. So, I mean, that's going to be a threshold most people are looking for. I think we're going to get into trouble with projects that we try to mandate a higher level on that. It's just, you know, we're looking to get those units in. We're looking to make this viable, especially in that area where we are forced to build. And so I, you know, I think I like this one a lot because it's about studying it more and sending it through the process. So I'll make a motion to support staff recommendation on this. Move forward. Seconded by Councilmember Avery. Perfect. Miss Vo, please.
With Mayor Pro Tem O'Neil and Councilmember Stapleton recusing themselves, the motion carried 5-0.
Wonderful. Wait for our colleagues to make it back up here. We now have the moment that I imagine most of you have been waiting for. We now have public comments on non-agenda items. Non-agenda items, please. If you're planning on speaking on this, you know, listen to your fellow friends. They might say the same thing that you might. We see a great amount of support out there. Why don't you line up, though, and feel free to use both podiums so we can move this quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Andrew Dufrain, and I'm a resident of the Summit Community in Newport Coast, but I'm here tonight as the president of the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club. I'm joined, as well, by quite a lovely contingent of our membership tonight. Please know that we want to be respectful. So what we're actually asking for is, just for three of us, myself, Mr. Steve Gleyer, and Dr. Mike Fabricant. My wife and I moved to Newport Coast in January of 2016, and we didn't know a soul here. Just a few months later, we went to an open house at the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club, and we were welcomed with open arms by every single one of these people that are here. They've become my extended family in the years since, and today, unfortunately, we feel like our family is being threatened. We're threatened by the aggressive approach that the city staff is taking in the renegotiation process of our lease. After a positive 85-year relationship with this city, 50 years in our current location, which is a park that we actually helped develop in partnership with this city and the Irvine Company, we built our clubhouse, donated it back to the city. So we were shocked when the city staff came to us first with a one-year lease option after we had had two consecutive 25-year leases here. Now, while they increased that offer to five, they did add a clause that allows the city the right to evict us with any decision of theirs and with very little notice. There is no mistaking that at least one member of the negotiating party for the city does not believe that we add value to the city. This was made very clear when he bluntly stated that he felt that pickleball would be a better use in the San Joaquin Hills Park. I'm here to declare, along with this community, that we already know what the best use is for the property in that park. It's our club, and it always has been. Please listen when I say that we know that times have changed, and we are open to the concept of increased cost sharing. We're asking for the council to help us encourage a longer lease term for our club that is in the spirit of the longstanding relationship that we have had with the city. Our club represents community. It represents lifelong friendships, and it represents a sport that is accessible by seniors and people of all ages. So as I close, I would like to welcome each of you that maybe at the next meeting you'll say, you know, what their activities were. I went to the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club Open House, and that is this coming Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This wonderful group of people would love to welcome you with open arms and open hearts in the way that they welcomed me and my lovely wife seven years ago. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. We appreciate it. We try to keep it quiet in here. Thank you. Next speaker, if you're planning on speaking on this item, come on up. I guess on this non-item.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and council members. My name is Steve Gleyer. I live at 26 Main Sail Drive in the Jasmine Creek community. I represent the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club as their vice president. And for the past 50 years, as Andrew said, the club has been located at the corners of Crown Drive and San Joaquin Road. Now, I think we can all think of people that we know in sports. Names pop up, like Nicholas and Palmer and McElroy and Graff and King, and of course, Williams in tennis. But did you know that right here in Newport Beach, we are proud to have the reigning national female lawn bowling champion, Ann Nunes? Ann? Not only is Ann the top-ranked female bowler in the United States, she's also ranked third in the world. And the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club has generated more U.S. Open winners, more national champions, and more national team member USAs than any other club in the entire United States. That's impressive. Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club members currently make up five of the 10 positions of the U.S. team that is going to the Nationals in August in Australia, along with 46 other countries. And in October, we will be hosting this year the U.S. Open in Newport Beach. And coming to that will be over 300 bowlers from across the United States who will be using Newport Beach hotels and eating at Newport Beach restaurants. So we, it recognizes this. So far this year, our club has grown by 35%. We have made concerted efforts to reach out to the Newport Beach community. For example, I have a sign that we used in this event. We held a Lawn Bowling 101 at Jasmine Creek Community Association. We had over 40 people from the community attend, and almost a quarter of them decided they liked it, and they signed up to join. And then, after the greens, we are also, in addition, working with the city's Parks and Rec Department, and we want to make sure that our greens are available to the public for free lessons. And in doing so, we are, and this is not the summer issue, but in the summer issue, the Navigator comes out. There's a link where they can sign on and come for free on the first and the third Saturday of each month through the summer to enjoy the sport. I've been an active pickleball player, and I can't wait to get back on the courts. But over the holidays, I had a hip replacement, and so getting back on the courts is tough. But I can get on the lawn bowling courts two to three times a week, and I actively enjoy that. And that's one of the beauties of this sport. It's a sport that you can pursue all the way through your life. I'd like to end-
You wrap up real quick. Thanks.
I'd like to end with a quote by councilwoman, Councilmember Lauren Kleiman, who said that at the last meeting, "We can never have too many opportunities for people to get together and be communal. I believe the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club does exactly that, providing an opportunity to build a community of friends and neighbors." And thank you for giving time tonight to express this, and I welcome you to on Saturday to the open house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Perfect.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good afternoon. My name is Michael Fabricant. I am a board-certified internist with a subspecialty in rheumatology, and I've been a resident in Corona del Mar for 32 years. During the course of my 45 years of practice, I've had the opportunity to evaluate and treat a variety of cardiovascular and musculoskeletal disorders and became a firm advocate of physical activity in an outdoor environment. And I'm here tonight to relate to you why I believe lawn bowling provides an important alternative for those who are unable or undesirous to participate in many of their prior outdoor activities. And let me explain. Having done my best to follow my own advocacy through the years by engaging in tennis, golf, and jogging, I was faced with a dilemma after back and hip surgery forced me to give up all. Pickleball was, and is now, a current rage, but participation still requires a good deal of mobility and flexibility, which was not a viable option for me. Fortunately, I was introduced to lawn bowling by a friend. Outdoors, so I get my vitamin D, I am now able to participate without any limitations. Moreover, I have found I have become the titular physician in residence at the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club, and have been introduced to a number of members with a variety of medical issues: muscular, cardiovascular, neurologic, and others. Many are no longer able to engage in prior activities, which has included tennis, golf, and pickleball. Yet, despite their impediments, they too have been able to participate in lawn bowling. The city of Newport Beach has shown great interest and respect for the senior citizens of the community with the creation of the Oasis Senior Center, a facility that provides education and social venue as well as an indoor physical program, but it lacks any outdoor physical facility. Not only does lawn bowling provide another enhancement for senior citizen participation in healthful, outdoor recreational activity, it allows them to participate with people of all ages in a friendly, social environment, and those interested in competitive competition. I believe lawn bowling offers a viable alternative to pickleball for those wishing to participate in an outdoor physical activity and encourage this council to continue to support lawn bowling within our community.
Thank you. Any other speakers? This is on non-agenda items.
Timer starts now. Hello, my name is Kathy Brown. I live at 1706 Miramar Drive. I will be speaking on behalf of some of the residents regarding social rehabilitation facilities. And I do ask everyone of the concerned residents, please stand for the next three minutes to show the city council how important this issue is. Thank you to our city attorney, Mr. Harp, and Tara Finnegan for talking with me about this issue. I hope we can help each other to get the best possible outcome. I've taken the following steps and asked other residents to do the same. First, I emailed our city council, legal and management. I expressed concerns about Asera Health with two properties on Miramar Drive and West Oceanfront, and the Mental Health Collective with three properties located on Tustin Avenue, Orchard Drive, and Santa Ana Avenue. I asked them how we can stop these for-profit businesses going into our densely populated residential neighborhoods. The few responses were, based on state law, the city of Newport Beach is required to treat these facilities the same as any other residential use and does not have authority to regulate these proposed facilities. The city of Newport Beach continues to advocate for the return of local control. I am concerned for the lack of guidance and finding another method of authority and a loophole, if you will. Second, I emailed Assemblymember Diane Dixon and Senator Janet Nguyen with the same concern. I received a copy of a letter from Diane Dixon sent on May 1, 2023, to the Joint Legislative Committee requesting an audit of Department of Healthcare Services, that's the DHCS, and its drug rehabilitation and sober living homes. Thank you, Diane. Although, this letter does not address social rehabilitation facilities or the Department of Social Services. A note to everyone, these organizations appear to have found their loophole by opening these facilities as quickly as possible with only the state licensing to avoid local ordinances, and by changing the name from Drug Rehabilitation, licensed from DHCS, to Social Rehabilitation, licensed from DSS. And yet, they allow the occupants of these facilities with similar symptoms and issues. Third, I phoned the state licensing office and wanted to report 816 West Oceanfront as being in violation of treating patients unlicensed. Their response was, since we have not issued a license yet, we are unable to do anything. If you see criminal activity, you should call the police. Fourth, I emailed California Department of Social Services and the State Licensing Board advising that Asera Health LLC is in violation of Title 22 Regulation Section 81008, which is integral facilities. They responded in writing, "Thank you for contacting Community Care Licensing. Upon review of your concerns, there is no violation-" May I finish? Almost done. "-of Title 22 Regulations. You can direct your questions and concerns to your local legislature regarding the facility locations for social rehabilitation facilities." I'm pretty sure that's who I thought I was contacting. So I am asking all of you, city council, legal, everything. It's pretty obvious. We don't know where to go to help protect our neighborhoods. We're not being guided. We need your help.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hello, my name is Kim Bibb, and I'm going to speak on the same topic that Kathy Brown just spoke on. I'm a longtime Peninsula Point resident and a local real estate agent that specializes in the peninsula. I want to briefly just address a couple of the issues about the social rehabilitation facilities and how I don't think it fits into our neighborhood. Number one, Peninsula Point and the peninsula is a very quiet, family neighborhood, and I don't think we should let companies like Asera come in and profit at the expense of our neighborhood and all that it offers. Asera is applying for permits for two properties on Peninsula Point, 1585 Miramar and 816 West Oceanfront. I had the opportunity to speak to the homeowner at 1585 Miramar just the other day and found out that they, Asera has been leasing the property for the last six months without anyone ever- le, Asera has been leasing the property for the last six months without anyone ever having moved in. What's interesting is he shared, not knowing that I had an opinion on this, I'm sure, but he shared that he is getting $17,000 a month, and no one's moved in yet. That's well over double what that house should lease for. If you look up what these companies are charging insurance companies, it's about, at the minimum, $10,000 per person. So they're looking to make $60,000 a month at least when they fill these homes. And it just doesn't seem like that's the right neighborhood to do that in. Asera has been, sorry. Anyway, that, so what if, what if everybody that owned a rental property on the Peninsula or Peninsula Point did the same thing? We actually, my husband and I, own the property right next door to 1585 Miramar, coincidentally, because I didn't know this was happening. But if we decided to not do what is, if we just rented out monthly and decided to do a short-term rental, well, that's not allowed. Well, what if we decided to rent to Asera? Well, we could make six to 10 times what we make on our rental there. We usually just rent to families that come to enjoy our neighborhood. Anyway, I just think that it's not fair that this company gets to profit. And I think Kathy shared a lot of the concerns of many of the people in our neighborhood. And I definitely think allowing the, them into our neighborhood right now will affect also the property values in our neighborhood in a negative way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Thank you. My name is Holly Bradford. I'm a resident also of Peninsula Point. We happen to be the neighbors that are immediately facing, our garages face the property of 1585 Miramar Drive. We're a family home. We have two kids. We've lived in the area for a while. We were unaware of the situation happening at this residence. It's been vacant for quite some time. We've had quite an investigative approach in figuring out quickly what is going on with the property because of what's proposed, and a lot of the neighbors, as you can see, are concerned. And we are too. And I'm also speaking today for a gentleman who lives right next door to the property, who's an older gentleman who's not here this evening, and he's quite fearful. He lives by himself. And I think the obvious concern that you've heard today is the concern for safety. And as I said, I'm a homeowner. I'm also a mom. I have kids. And I'm aware of the issues that have been reported in the past with this incident in Santa Ana Heights where there was a person who intruded into a property and had to be shot for the homeowner defending himself against this, this intruder. And that was something that was quite a community concern. And thank you for your concern, and thank you for your attention that you've already paid to this issue. As residents of our community, we come today because we're still concerned, and we just don't see anything to, to prevent this licensed, this licensing, excuse me, this licensing of Asera Health, in particular for these two residences. I understand the license is pending. I understand it's been exposed in the past. It's available also for viewing on the website of Newport Beach, that Asera Health has had previous violations. And Cadi Petri Norris put together information, a letter to Todd Spitzer regarding this Asera Health being a bad actor in, in so many words. So if there's been past violations, why would there be this type of situation occurring again in our neighborhood, right behind our home, 20 feet away from a family, and, and with families in the area? This is a single-family residential neighborhood. We have some multifamily. I understand the history of this area. We do have some short-term rentals. We also have an ordinance to protect against transient rental, or transient guests. We have an ordinance that prevents us from renting for short term. So why would this be allowed in our area, number one, because it's already an issue that's been exposed in 2021? There's information all over the city of Newport Beach website regarding this, this group that put together all of the information in support of it. Katrina Foley attended. Diane Dixon attended. The gentleman, you know, several of you here attended. There was, there was quite a, a community outcry. And we're just curious, of course, where we are on it, and how the city of Newport Beach is accountable to this, and what can be done as residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this? If you do plan to speak on this, please feel free to come up and stand at the other podium.
Good evening. It's my wife, Holly Bradford. I'm Mitchell Bradford, 1584 East Ocean Boulevard. As she mentioned, we, we sit across an alley from this, 20 feet away. This is not a residential neighborhood where people may hang out in the backyard, and you may not know what's going on. These kids play in the alleys for obvious reasons. We don't know why, but Ocean Boulevard is a bike path. And so there's plenty of activity on the streets. These kids play in the alleys. And so we obviously have simple concerns like that. But what I really wanted to come, come up and speak about is I've been, I've been speaking in front of city councils and planning commissioners for 30 years. I'm a home builder. William Lyon Homes was one of my locations that I worked here. And I can remember how hard we advocate for residential housing. And you all know, they took your RDAs away. So, you know, we already know the challenges we have with, you know, improving our cities anyway. And we know the lifeblood of our cities are our residents. You know, Fashion Island is a great iconic location. Hoag Hospital is, you know, is fantastic hospital. Our kids were born there. But our, our neighborhoods are the cornerstone of our community. And when I go and try to get home building projects approved, approved in Southern California, a lot of times they get disapproved. Why? Because they're zoned commercial, or they're zoned retail. And retail is the lifeblood of the cities. We understand that. So we really backed off and didn't push for that until Rena started, you know, jamming all the cities to begin to focus on housing again. We all know the issue of, you know, lack of housing is why we have an affordability crisis. I totally agree with building affordable units. But until we build houses, you know, we have real challenges. But once we finally get them built in an R1 zone, we, I don't expect a medical or a hospital facility, even if it's only six beds, to be built in our R1 neighborhood. And so I just want to leave you with this as it relates. I understand sober living, and, and I support all of that, by the way. I, I support affordable housing in, in a huge way. I guess the question I have for you when it comes to sober living is how do we know a person in a sober living home is doing okay? We test them to see if they're sober. How do we know if somebody in a drug rehab home is doing okay? We test them to see if they're clean of drugs. My simple question to you, with mentally handicapped people, which is the way the state defines the people that are in these facilities, how do you test them for their mental acuity and know that when they move into our neighborhoods, that they're going to be okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items? Perfect. Mr. Harp, can you just touch upon the work we've been doing and some of our difficulties here?
I think that when it comes to these residential care facilities, you know, we're concerned about the state licensing these homes without taking into consideration, you know, safety issues and overconcentration, and whether they're integral facilities or not. And we had a really good conversation with the residents the other day, and I think there's going to be an opportunity potentially for us in the future to partner with them as we look to return local control and get the state to do a better job of managing the facilities that they're licensing. I know that we've been working with Diane Dixon to have an audit of some of the state departments, and I think that that's going to be coming forward to hearing this summer. And so I'm really looking forward to partnering with our residents and trying to make some changes here.
Wonderful. Thank you. So we're going to move on now to public hearings. Item number 12, ordinance number 2023-4 and 2023-5, code amendments related to timeshares.
Mayor Blum, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Simone Juris, your community development director, and with me is Jaime Mario, who is the principal planner. This evening, we're bringing forward to you an ordinance. And what this ordinance does, it finally addresses that fractional homeownership model that we've had a lot of conversations with the council. Now we're, this proposal in front of you really defines fractional ownership as a form of timeshare. We're not proposing to regulate ownership. That's not what this is at all. It is a very specific use. We're trying to regulate the use of it. We're not going to regulate friends and family having a LLC together, or a trust, or some type of estate. That's not what this is. This is a very focused ordinance that is very focused on fractional homeownership. There's definitely different companies out there, Amber Picasso and a few others. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mario. He's going to go ahead and make a brief presentation, and then we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Mayor Blum, members of council. I just provided a little bit of background. The city, we held a robust discussion on this topic over the last year and a half, not including tonight's meeting. We've had a total of five city council meetings, three planning commission meetings. Within the planning commission, an ad hoc committee was established, which included Councilmember Wigan during his term on the commission. They held a total of seven meetings, which included meetings with residents as well as Picasso. The city also consulted with a planning consultant to prepare a comprehensive study on this topic as well, which is available on the city's website. The last time we met here at city council, we received clear direction from the council to pursue both zoning code and local coastal program amendments to broaden the definition of timeshare to clearly capture the fractional home, homeownership model. As a timeshare, these uses would be subject to the city's existing timeshare regulations and standards, which includes prohibition in all residential zones. Staff did prepare the amendments, which we presented to the planning commission. The planning commission recommended adoption of the amendments. However, they also provided some additional considerations for the council. One is to, so if we can clarify within the definition, to see if we can clearly exclude family or friend arrangements. And then second is to consider adding a prohibition against the advertisements of these prohibited timeshares. So I'll just go ahead and kind of dive into the amendments themselves. So the, the biggest component of this change is that we're modifying the timeshare-related definitions in both our zoning code, which is Title 20, and our local coastal program, which is Title 21. And the intent of that change is to, it's mainly to update and outdated definition that we have in our code, and also to closely mirror the definition that's defined in the Business Professions Code, as the state has defined timeshares. There's a number of timeshare-related definitions, and they all work together. And the intent is to be broad to close any potential loopholes. So as drafted, fractional ownership would clearly be defined as a timeshare. I'm not going to go into the details, but this is a summary of the various definitions we've added. They all have a very specific purpose, and as I mentioned, they all work together. But I did just want to focus on the definition of timeshare plan. And so there's really four main triggers which need to be addressed or be triggered in order to be defined as a timeshare. And so the first is it involves the use of an accommodation. An accommodation is a residential unit, or a hotel or motel unit. It does not include, you know, boats or planes, other forms of fractional ownership. This is real property. There has to be a plan involved, some sort of arrangement that a purchaser can then, in exchange for consideration, so that involves, you know, the purchasing through financial purchase, the exclusive right for the accommodation for less than a one-year term on a reoccurring basis. So those four triggers have to be met in order for an arrangement to be considered a timeshare. And so just to be clear, on the bottom of the slide, you'll see three different scenarios, which are not considered timeshares under this definition. So, for example, three friends buy a property, and there's no exclusive use arrangement. That is not a timeshare. If a couple is divorced, and the court orders shared use of a property, that still doesn't meet the definition. And lastly, if siblings inherit property and they agree on the use of that property, that still doesn't meet the definition. The second component of the amendments is updating the city's existing timeshare regulations. For the most part, we're maintaining the existing framework. There's just small revisions for consistency with the new modified definitions. But just as a reminder, timeshares are still allowed in several commercial mixed-use zoning districts through the approval of a conditional use permit. Additionally, timeshares cannot be created through the conversion of existing dwelling units. Timeshare project needs to include a minimum of 300 units. Development agreement would be required. And then there's a sales management operating plan that would be required. Since we presented this to the planning commission, we have made a small, an additional change to the timeshare regulations. And that was based on feedback we received from the commission and the public. And that is to prohibit any person, including owner, agent, or broker, from establishing a timeshare, converting any unit into a timeshare, advertising for sale a timeshare, managing a timeshare. That is not allowed by the code. So these would be prohibited, a timeshare, a unit. And then, to be clear, this new regulation or prohibition would only apply to new uses after the effective date of this ordinance. So existing units would not be subject to this new regulation. I did want to mention that we have a last-minute change to that provision of the code. This is not in your packet, but we did provide this in response to comments we received earlier today from an attorney representing Picasso. And that is just to clarify that the intent of the prohibition on the advertisement of prohibited timeshares is relating to apply to persons that would benefit or receive economic benefit from the sale of a timeshare. So this is intended to apply to a broker or a real estate agent that would benefit from the sale of one of these prohibited timeshare units. But it's not intended to apply to someone that's simply reposting a social media post. And then the third component of the amendments is updating our regulations that are within our LCP or Title 21. Within Title 21, we do have regulations affecting visitor accommodations, which include timeshares. And it's just clarifying that not only the development is subject to these regulations, but also the creation, which includes the conversion of existing uses, to a timeshare would be subject to these regulations. And we are adding a provision that clearly prohibits the conversion of existing dwelling units into timeshares. This is just for reference. As of today's date, we are aware of a total of 12 facilities that are managed by these larger operators such as Picasso, Ember, or Nelson Family Estates. If the ordinance passes, these units would be considered legal non-conforming and would be permitted to remain. And so staff is recommending the adoption of the ordinances with the modification that I mentioned earlier in my presentation. The ordinance has also authorized staff to submit the local coastal program amendment to the California Coastal Commission. We are seeking to request a de minimis, de minimis approval. And that would hopefully allow us to enact the ordinance for Title 21 a lot quicker. In terms of implementation, with the adoption of this ordinance, properties outside the coastal zone would be subject to this ordinance 30 days after second reading. But properties within the coastal zone, the ordinance wouldn't take effect until after Coastal Commission approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Wonderful. I'll bring it up here. Any comments? Seeing none, let's jump out to the public then. Any public comments on this item? Any at all? I mean, we're, we're good if there's not.
Mayor Blum, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, on the slide, if you were a little confused, the thing about timeshares that we do permit, it's 100 units, but they can be connected to a resort hotel with 300 rooms in it. What I wanted to say is that the, I noticed that the provisions prohibiting the advertisement or management of a timeshare are not being presented to the Coastal Commission. They're in the ordinance, only in the ordinance modifying Title 20. So I do not understand, since that does not require Coastal Commission involvement, why that provision would not become effective 30 days after adoption. However, the city staff wants this to get through the Coastal Commission quickly, and they're asking for something called a de minimis amendment. I want to point out, if you do not understand the Coastal Commission process, the ordinance that you adopt tonight goes to them for their review. They are required by state law to act upon your request within 60 days. But there are two paths for that. If what they receive is a very clear, clean, simple ordinance, If what they receive is a very clear, clean, simple ordinance that does not require any great analysis, the executive director of the Coastal Commission can put it on their calendar for immediate approval. If it is something that looks like it might require analysis and modification of the language that's in it, then instead of approving it within the 60 days, director asks invariably for them a one-year extension to consider the matter, and your ordinance goes to the end of the list and takes a very long time to get reviewed. Therefore, I think you want you to approve and send to the Coastal Commission the simplest possible ordinance you can. This is what staff is asking you to submit for a very simple change. This, I think, is what you could be submitting, because the coastal, our coastal plan has actually very little to say about timeshares. It merely offers a definition of them, and it says certain areas in which they can and cannot exist. All you need to do is to ask to align that definition with the changes that you're making to Title 20. I think the Coastal Commission will understand that's a very simple change, and it could go on the 60-day path instead of the one-year path. Therefore, I would recommend that you instruct the staff to come back in two weeks with this, just the essence of the ordinance, not this huge thing to flummox the Coastal Commission staff with. And I think in the end, you will get this much sooner. And some of the provisions you saw up there, I think, are going to trigger, for reasons I explained in writing, a need for them to modify the language you submit. And if you just say that you're aligning the definition, I don't think they will have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Paul Watkins. I'm a resident of the city. Yeah, I was flummoxed by the 699 pages of stuff, but the reality is that it's a sheer cure for insomnia. So I quit. I just stopped reading all that stuff. But I'm asking you tonight to adopt the recommendation from staff. It's a fairly simple deal. We simply want to sustain the quality of life that we have here in the city, that we've all worked hard for, tranquility, peacefulness, predictability. What we don't want is move in hearty, move out, repeat. That's what we want to avoid. Well, please adopt the recommendation from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and council members. My name is Pauri Doshi. I'm a Public Affairs Manager for Picasso. Our attorney has submitted a letter to the city, which explains why we believe the two ordinances before you tonight are unlawful and should not be adopted. Rather than reiterate all of the points that are in the letter, I'll simply ask that you please take some time to consider what is in the letter, make a commitment to protect property rights, and do not move forward with the ordinances that are before you. As you know, we have submitted an alternative ordinance for the city's consideration, which presents common sense regulations and preserves property rights. We know the city's goal is to address community concerns, but please know that these ordinances before you tonight miss the mark and should not be adopted. Should the city have any interest in exploring other regulatory options, we continue to be a resource and partner in that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? If you're planning on speaking to this one, please head up.
Hi, Maureen Cotton, 206 15th Street. I want to commend city staff on all the work that they've done to bring these ordinances around to where they are. I also recommend taking into consideration what Mr. Mosher had to say about keeping things simple to keep the Coastal Commission on a short-term path instead of a one-year path. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Blum, city council members and staff. My hat's off to you. That's quite a document you guys put together. I just want to also reinforce what Mr. Mosher said. We have a lot of citizens out there that every time a house goes up for sale in some of these prime areas, what I mean by primaries, Balboa Island, Newport Island, Peninsula Point, they're concerned that it's going to become a fractional owned home. They're very concerned about it, and they're worried about, because we have history with the lag time between the city council sending a recommendation to the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Commission acting on that. And that lag time, we want it as short as possible. And, believe me, a lot of residents are concerned. I have one in my neighborhood who saw some activity in her, the home next door to her, and she immediately contacted me because she'd been out of town. She says, "What's going on with fractional owners? I'm really worried about it." So there are residents that are very concerned about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor, councillors, and staff. I just want to reiterate one thing that I've heard as all this process has gone on. Everybody's put a lot of work into it, and I understand Picasso's position. But I just want to remind everybody that really, they're trying to have the cake and eat it. They say they're the same as everybody else, tenants in common, all of that, yet they propose a proposal to you in good faith for 500 permits. Which is it? Is it the same? If so, why do you need a permit? If not, say it's not. But to me, it's a lot of hot air, and it's a lot of a wolf in sheep's clothing, and I ask you to please put the residents first, listen to what everybody has said, all the knowledgeable people who've spoken in front of you from the community, and think about the fabric of the community again. And that's been a recurring theme this evening through lots of topics. So it's obviously very, very important to Newport Beach residents. So I'd ask you to please just listen to what all the residents have said, and to do whatever is necessary to make it go through as smoothly as possible, and to not put up with smoke and mirrors on what companies like this are doing, both in topics we heard earlier, whether getting around ordinances, and think of what can be done in the future to preserve the fantastic city that we have here in Newport Beach. Thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Denise Oberman. I'm an oceanfront resident. I want to thank the staff as well, and the city at large, for the tremendous effort to put together the ordinances. We have a group that's reviewed the ordinance, and the body of the ordinance looks, it looks really good, and we ask that the council move forward to approve it. We heard in the presentation the concept or the commitment to treat the 12 already established uses as legal nonconforming uses. And I guess the thing that seems a little bit vague is, what is to assure the community that those 12 uses are all that we're going to have after we go through the Coastal Commission, period? I mean, let there be no mistake about it. This is commercial business, commercial use. There are multiple recurring revenue streams that companies like Picasso and Amber get. And they get those, they get them by, quote unquote, facilitating the purchase and subsequently the sale of the property. They put together an LLC structure. They have significant amount of terms and restrictions. They have to, the people that acquire the fractional interest from the commercial business, which is commercial use for the benefit of Picasso, they have to sign both operating and management agreements, which have been constructed by Picasso. They are significantly restricted in the duration and the number of times that they can use these properties. And they also have to use a proprietary app, and this as an example, Picasso, and maybe others have created, but specifically Picasso, in order to submit, to be able to use the property at a time that they want to use. So there's multiple recurring commercial revenue streams, commercial business, commercial uses. So I appreciate everything the council's doing. We just would like some clarification as to how can we come down the finish line on an effective date, so there's clarity. If the community agrees that it makes sense and that the community can live with these 12 legal nonconforming uses, what is going to assure the community that that is what will happen when we leave here tonight? Thank you so much again for your effort and consideration.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? If we're planning on speak, please head up to the front. Thank you.
I really wasn't planning on speaking, so I wasn't up here. I would consider you all to be politicians, and you may not want to identify it, but I think that's what you are. Nothing wrong with it. I didn't mean that in a negative term, but you're representing residents of Newport. And it seems to me across the board, a big majority of residents are opposed to the fractional ownership. And so I'd ask you to represent us and to do the right thing. As an aside, I was reading, I was talking to a friend of mine today who's in Palm Springs, and I told him about Picasso. He goes, "No, I haven't heard of it." It's because it's not allowed in Palm Springs. But I was looking at some of the ads of Picasso, and it turns out that one of the eight ownerships, you're allowed to have partners in that eight ownership, so you could conceivably have 16. Anyway, I hope you do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. We're going to bring it up here. Anyone?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to move staff recommendation with the modified language relating to the advertisement addressed during the staff presentation.
Move a second. Seconded by Councilmember Avery. Did you want to say something? Councilmember Grant?
Grant.
Grant? No, seconded by Councilmember Avery.
Oh. Just real quickly, I'm wondering, mayor, if we can have staff weigh in just a little bit about, there seemed to be a lot of community concern about the timeline, and I would wonder if we could have staff just weigh in a little bit about, you know, after this meeting, what is anticipated? Clearly, we have other approvals that are necessary, and we don't necessarily have control over those approvals, but I think it would lend towards the community being a little bit more assured if we understood exactly what the, you know, the next steps are in moving the needle on this.
Sure. Yeah, we definitely understand the urgency in this matter. We've had some informal discussions with Coastal Commission staff. They understand our position and generally support our position. We've explained the need to accelerate the review of this amendment, and so the idea of a de minimis amendment was actually something we discussed with staff. And so it's our goal to submit as a de minimis amendment. If so, that would allow the approval as short as two months. Once they determine that our amendment is de minimis, they will schedule it for a hearing. If they determine that it doesn't meet the findings for a de minimis amendment, then there's two options. They can process it as a minor amendment or a major amendment. Typically, under the regulations, they have a total of 60 days to review the city's LCP amendment, but they typically ask for a one-year extension. In the past, such as our short-term lodging amendment, we did work with them to expedite that review and prioritize it over our several other amendments we have out the Coastal Commission. So that would be kind of our Plan B strategy, but our primary strategy is to try to get it approved as a de minimis amendment.
Thank you.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second up here. If we could vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for ordinance 2023-4, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, approving an amendment to Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, related to timeshares, and ordinance 2023-5, and ordinance approving and authorizing submittal of a local coastal program amendment to the California Coastal Commission, amending Title 21 Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, related to timeshares. The motion carried unanimously, 7-0.
Next up, we're going on to ordinance number 2023-6, a code amendment updating commercial parking requirements. I have some conflicts to announce on this item due to financial interests in Arc-Ba Turn Baker and 2902 PCH. And I also have a conflict at the next item, 14, due to real property interests at 224 Marine. So Mayor Protem will be taking over.
All right, we'll move into item number 13. Mr. Juerges.
Thank you, Mayor Protem O'Neill and city council members. Again, Simone Juerges, your Community Development Director. With me is Principal Planner, Ben Zadiba. We've been working on this item before you for the last couple of years. It is an amendment to our commercial parking standards. Just going to go ahead and turn it over to Ben, and he'll just dive right into it.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Mayor Protem O'Neill, council members. Ben Zadiba with the Planning Division. I'll provide a brief presentation. I do want to note that I have Ezra Pinkus Roth with me. He's from Nelson Nygaard. He is the consultant that the city engaged for this effort. I just want to leave it on this slide for a minute to note that this is a commercial parking code amendment. While there is a decent focus on restaurants, it is a more broad-sweeping amendment that affects commercial uses in general. So I'll go into that a little bit further, but I wanted to highlight that here. So I just want to start with, how did we get here? I know there are several newer council members, so I wanted to let you know that the background is on the slide here. You've got emergency temporary use permits that were issued in 2020 and 2021. And as part of the emergency order, the council gave the Community Development Director authority to issue emergency temporary use permits for restaurants to locate dining areas outside without consideration of parking. So as you see, with no additional parking required. It turned out that a lot of restaurants liked that, a lot of residents liked that, the community liked it, and so there was an effort to explore continuing that. And as part of that, we issued limited-term permits, which extended those patios beyond the COVID-19 state of emergency, and with a lot of them expiring at the end of 2023. Just want to note that the proposed amendment will help to reduce any barrier that the parking requirements might offer, to help make those patios permanent. Stepping back, I just want to share that we did start with city council study session back in 2021, that's January, and then we came back after engaging a consultant to share some initial findings and ultimately get initiation on the code amendments at the end of 2021. We held a community workshop, we did a planning commission study session, and we held a public hearing last month and got a unanimous vote from the planning commission recommending your adoption of these amendments. Through that process, we identified two phases. So we are in phase one, hence the arrow, and this looks at the, quote unquote, low-hanging fruit, if you will, bicycle-based reductions, shared mobility-based reductions, revised commercial parking ratios, which includes restaurants, and administrative parking waiver by director. As part of phase two, and this was vetted through the council study session November of 2021, we would look at an in-loop parking fee program to make sure that is meaningful with actual results from the in-loop parking fees collected, and then looking at better curbside management from our existing curbs, as well as parking management districts. You may have heard of the Balboa Village Parking Management District, which looks at Balboa Village specifically to see what its specific needs are. So that'll address things like employee parking spillover. How do we address where they park so that they're not impacting residents? That'll come later on as part of phase two. So I'm going to dive right in. Bicycle-based reductions. This would allow a one-space reduction for every three bicycle parking spaces provided above any minimum requirement. So there are California building codes, the Cal Green Code requires a certain amount of bike stalls for certain projects. This would be above those minimums, and it would allow up to 5% reduction, as well as an additional 5% reduction if things like showers are provided on-site for employees. So, for instance, here at City Hall, we have showers, so this could apply to something like City Hall. I do want to note that at the prior council study session at Planning Commission, there is a concern that this is not translatable citywide. So as part of that, staff included language that indicates that an applicant must demonstrate there's a ridership for bicycles and a demand for bicycle parking. We noted that perhaps in the airport area, it doesn't make as much sense to include bicycle facilities as it does down on the peninsula in Cronomaire. We also have shared mobility reductions, which would allow a 10% reduction in required parking with either the following. So talking about 20 feet of dedicated private curb space, which is not used for emergency purposes or anything that is required for access. So again, no red curb. And then also a reduction that would be allowed if you're dedicating one off-street parking space for pickup or drop-off. So you do see that, and for example, larger shopping centers, you have a pickup-dropoff location that's signed. Usually, it's for Usually, it's for a very quick turnover, pickup and drop-off transaction. So this allows up to 10% reduction with those. As for the revised restaurant parking ratio, at the top, you see our current requirement, the top right. Bottom right, that is the revised requirement. So what this does is it revises the parking requirement to remove a consideration on net public area or customer area. Currently, that's in the code at 1 per 30 to 1 per 50 square feet, and it is somewhat subjective. Staff has some guidelines to follow. Generally, we land on 1 per 40, so you can almost assume that a typical restaurant is parked at 1 per 40 square feet of customer area. There are some additional exceptions and exclusions for outdoor dining, but that is also captured in the proposed requirement through the discounted 1 per 150 square foot outdoor dining area parking rate. Also, as part of the effort in studying this, staff identified a fast casual use through research of 10 peer cities in Orange County. Looking at best practices, we identified that the six-seat maximum for takeout service limited is quite low and restrictive. So part of the proposed amendment would increase that seat count to 20 seats while keeping the parking requirement at 1 per 250, which is commensurate with a retail parking rate. I'll note that that also includes outdoor dining areas. So the intent is that a business owner could come in with a restaurant and place 15 seats inside and five seats outside, and that would comply with this fast casual. Importantly, I will note that takeout service fast casual does not allow alcohol sales in service, and that's intentional because if you have a restaurant that offers alcohol sales, the idea of it being a quick turnover restaurant is no longer there. It's really intended just for a quick transaction to pick up and take away and consume off-site. So anything that includes alcohol service would bump up to a regular restaurant, which would have to comply with these requirements that I showed on the prior slide. Another component that was windowed in prior study sessions was making medical and dental office parking requirements equivalent with the one parking space for every 250 square feet requirement for general office, and that was studied in more depth after the Planning Commission Study Session, where concern was expressed that, I think one commissioner put it best, that doctors' offices are COVID-proof, so it might not make so much sense to make them to equivalent uses from a parking standpoint. And Nelson Nygaard studied 13 other peer cities and found that they all have higher parking requirements for medical, so staff did not believe it's appropriate to include a change to make those equivalent at this time. However, I will note that the administrative parking waiver by the director would, in most cases, allow the director to waive the additional parking required for a medical office conversion. Caveat is that there must be a professionally-prepared parking demand and supply analysis that is reviewed by the city traffic engineer and accepted, and that would allow the Community Development Director to make a determination that the waiver is appropriate at this time or at that time that the evidence is provided. Again, waivers above 20% will still require a conditional use permit, and would go before the Planning Commission. Lastly, a limit on combining reductions and waivers. So the consultant recommends that for any of the reductions that I just shared, so bicycle parking as well as ride share and mobility considerations, there wouldn't be any exceedance of 20%, and anything greater than 20% would go to the Planning Commission, with the idea being that greater discretion and public review is required at that point in time. And I will say that the Community Development Director's determinations on any of these waivers would be reported and would be appealable actions. As far as next steps, if you adopted the ordinance tonight, we go to second reading May 23. I will note, similar to fractionals, although different, this would likely be a major amendment. It would go to the Coastal Commission for review and would need to be authorized by the Coastal Commission and re-adopted as an ordinance for Title 21 in order to make this effective in the coastal zone. In the fall and late high winter of this year, we'll start exploring Phase 2, which again is the parking district areas as well as the in-loop parking program. That concludes my presentation. I want to leave this up as a recap so that you can ask any questions you may have. Again, Ezra is here, our parking consultant, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Quick question. Where do we have showers at City Hall?
In the basement.
We do, by the EOC, because it's set up for USC, so we actually have showers and bathrooms for that.
Got it. Interesting. Didn't know that. Okay. Any questions or comments up here? Mr. Avery.
So how granular has this study been in terms of looking at all the areas we know that are always impacted by lack of parking? So that's the pier area, Balboa, the sort of areas that are just chronic in the city, and that's not going to change, in my view, going forward. These are just where people want to be. So, you know, fitting something like this into that, I don't know if it makes much difference. You know? So another thing occurs to me, why not do? I just think we should be providing as much parking as we can for people coming to visit, come down to the beach, particularly in those high, you know, use areas, and throw in bike racks as well. Obviously, do anything to encourage people to bike. There's a lot of talk about, you know, obviously, there's the Uber and Lyft, but their prices have gone up significantly since, you know, the pandemic. I mean, now it's, my wife and I, we got all an Uber to go down to a restaurant on the water on the peninsula from Newport Heights. It was $35 on a Saturday night, and $35 going home. So I think that would tend to, these price increases might intend to keep people from, you know, using that service. So that's just my main concern, is that we don't exacerbate, which we already know these areas. So is there a way we're going to deal with that?
That's a very good question, Councilmember Avery. So as part of Phase 2, we will look at specific areas that do have problems. So as I mentioned, Balboa Village is a perfect example, where we looked at that area specifically, the existing parking supply that's available on the public streets as well as private parking supplies to make sure it's an efficient use of that parking supply. So there are talks of where do employees park and offering discounted employee parking permits, as well as strategic placement of bike racks. So I think as we get to Phase 2, that will really address the more granular approach that you're referencing.
Okay, great. I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant.
First, I do want to commend staff for being creative and thinking this through. It's a complicated sort of situation, given that it originated in, you know, sort of the pandemic time, and it created a situation that now we have to respond to. And certainly, our residents and our visitors enjoy having the outdoor dining, and that's something that, you know, we absolutely have an outdoor community, and we want to cultivate that business culture of providing those kind of services to, you know, our guests and our residents. And so again, I commend you on this plan, and it seems like it can really make a difference in, you know, revitalizing, not revitalizing, revitalizing our business community. I'm wondering how this affects the fairness level, and I'm not exactly sure, but there are a lot of businesses, particularly restaurants, in a lot of the impacted areas that Councilmember Avery was speaking about, that really don't have their own parking. They have shared parking in different ways, and how do these calculations affect those businesses that are either, I don't know, paying city for city-used parking or, you know, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
That's a very good question. So first, I would just add that any use has the ability today to ask for a parking adjustment based on, you know, substantial evidence that they provide that shows that the parking demand is less or there is adequate public parking supply to serve that use. You're very correct in that a lot of the older peninsula establishments, and even some in Corona Del Mar, don't have onsite parking to serve the uses. So what I would say is that the proposed changes, first, parking requirements are always there regardless of whether there's a parking supply or not. So a restaurant will have a current parking requirement based on the code. Changing it will allow us to reanalyze that parking requirement and may allow us more flexibility to increase the outdoor dining area based on that reanalysis that we can do. And that's kind of a convoluted answer, but think of it as this is serving as a different way to look at a parking requirement, even if there's not a parking supply in the field. At the end of the day, the applicant or business owner can still apply for an adjustment. This may allow the Community Development Director to waive the additional parking that's required for the outdoor dining area, even if there's not a parking supply existing today.
So I guess that's a case-by-case basis on the administrative appeal, or is that how that works?
Yes, there is a case-by-case analysis of the proposals, and I would also add, I neglected to mention this in the presentation, but anytime someone wants to add an outdoor dining area, there will be a review of their use permit if they have one in place, and in many cases, it will require an amendment to the use permit just because they are adding that outdoor dining area. So we'll be looking at impacts from noise, alcohol service on the patio. What this will do is just eliminate or reduce parking as a potential barrier for that patio to come online. So there will be a use permit reviewed for most every restaurant that we look at.
And then, this is just a side probably question, but do we still have any restaurants operating their outdoor patios on city property?
No, all of the ones on city property are likely cleaned up.
So let me jump into that. So we do have some of the restaurants on Balboa Island on Marine Avenue. The council's taken a position to go ahead and continue to allow that on Marine. We have some issues with ADA access, the wheelchair access. And then we do have some properties on, in Corona Del Mar that are occupying the public sidewalk without a permit, and that's a separate enforcement issue that we're dealing with.
So is there any, like, end date that we'll be allowing that use of public property, or is it just an ongoing basis?
So the public property, only Balboa Island, the council has taken a position on to continue to allow that. The council has not taken a position, as far as anywhere else in the city, they've asked that all the restaurants go back indoors. And so we had a lot out there in McFadden Square by the Newport Pier. All that was taken out from the public parking area. We do have some enforcement issues that we're dealing with in Corona Del Mar, and that's the extent of it.
And we continue to allow it on Balboa Island? There's no sunset provision? It's just indefinitely?
At this time, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kleiman.
Thank you. So I too want to thank staff. This has been a very long process and a heavy lift, so thank you for all the work that you've done. Councilmember Wigan and I have already kind of become familiar with this process since we heard this before on Planning Commission. I think our parking code is long overdue for refresh. Our requirements have been somewhat arbitrary. I think onerous parking standards limit the ability for new businesses to come to our city, for existing businesses to thrive to their fullest extent. And we've noted that repeated parking studies show that many restaurant patrons and retail customers are riding by bike, by foot, by ride share, rather than in their own car. So of course, we'll be continuing, I assume, to encourage other modes of transportation and walkability through our general plan update process, and I think also looking at more regional parking solutions so that the burden's not totally on the property or business owner. And I also want to just note that on Planning Commission, we too had that concern about the medical parking requirements, and we expressed the desire to see those remain consistent rather than reducing the need there since we feel, versus these types of uses, that medical generally tends to require full parking needs. That was all I had. I'm certainly ready to make a motion if...
We'll go to public comment.
Oh, thank you.
I'll come back to you for the motion. All right, any public comments on this item?
Mayor Protem O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have some minor comments about the changes to the restaurant parking standards. One thing I noticed is, as I think was explained to you, that the proposal here is introducing a new definition into our code. What used to be called takeout service limited is now being renamed as takeout service fast casual, and the definition changed somewhat. And I would note that you have here many pages of tables, and they don't just give the name, but each one keeps repeating takeout service fast casual parentheses up to 20 seats. I would suggest perhaps you don't really want the parentheses up to 20 seats in every table, because at some point, a future council might want to change that threshold, and they could just change the definition of what takeout service fast casual means without having to update all these tables. That's the first suggestion. The second one, if you look at the last of those tables, which is on page 13-18, Table 3-10 from our code, as I pointed out to the Planning Commission, the definition is up to 20 seats. I believe when you go from 20 seats to 21, you change from the takeout service fast casual to the food service, fast food category, and the parking requirement goes up not a little bit, it goes up five times. You need five times more parking. If you have 21 seats, then you have 20 seats. And I, as I explained to the Planning Commission, if I'm reading that correctly, I don't know the rational basis why one seat would change the parking requirement by five times, but it seems to do that. It's also not clear to me when I look at the definitions. It would seem some restaurants, like one with 15 seats, could, it fits both definitions of being a fast food and being a fast casual. I assume they get to choose the lower parking requirement, but I don't know if the city has any discretion or if it's clear from the code, if somebody can say, oh, you're really in the fast food category even though you have only 15 seats. And then finally, in looking at the definitions, I noticed, and I don't know if this is inadvertent or not, but there is currently not only a definition of takeout service limited, but one called takeout service only, which is a restaurant that has no seats at all. But those are not mentioned anywhere in our current code, either as to where they're allowed or what the parking requirement is for them. So I don't know if the intent was to do something different for them. You would think if you have no customers eating inside, maybe you get a bonus and have the even less parking. If the intent was not to address those at all, then that would be an opportunity to delete that definition, which is, it seems to be just dead wood if we're not using it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, Mr. Stapleton.
I just want to take a moment and commend staff, and thank you for being thought leaders and leading the charge on this. A lot has changed in the past, and COVID changed the game, and in my district particularly, there's a lot of, we're trying to create these walkable, ridable communities, have more outdoor dining, and I think you guys are spot on with what you're doing. And I'll just echo Councilman Kleiman's comments about technology and how it's changing the game as well. So nice work.
All right, Ms. Kleiman.
I will move to approve this item.
Second? All right, seconded by Mr., pardon me, seconded by Mr. Stapleton. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2023-6, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Related to Commercial Parking. Councilmembers Grant and Kleiman, please. The motion carries 6-0 with Mayor Blom recusing himself.
All right, thank you. This has come to us in various forms. Do we have any requests for staff presentation on this? No. Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Apparently, we're on item 14, which is the issuance of bonds for two assessment districts in the city. And I would just remind you that two previous meetings, you had a gentleman from Balboa Island come here, Mr. Jim Dastur, expressing some concern about the issuance of the bond for District Number 124, and some frustration with getting answers from the city as to how they would handle two situations he had a concern about. First was the assessment district was approved by a vote, and at the time of the vote, if I understood him correctly, there were some assumptions about the cost of financing that were provided to the residents that were based on certain interest assumptions that perhaps are no longer valid. I believe that was his current concern number one. And concern number two, which I think was even more important to him, was that unlike other assessment districts for undergrounding... this one was going to be performed in phases. He was in a property, as I understood it, in one of the latter phases. And he is concerned if the amount of this bond turns out not to be enough to finance that future undergrounding for his district, what will happen then? Will the city go back to the entire population, asking them to approve a reassessment, which he thought those who had already got their undergrounding are unlikely to want to impose an additional assessment upon themselves? So does the city absorb the extra cost? What happens then? And he had frustration not getting answers to either of those. I didn't hear them answered here. I don't know what the answers are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, bring it back. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move staff recommendation with bond issuance for assessment districts 120-2 and 124.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Saying no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries 6-0 with Mayor Blom recusing himself.
All right, Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, do we have any motions for reconsideration? Saying none, we stand adjourned. Thanks.